Called meeting to order with the pleasure of legends. The pleasure of legends.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Everybody's had a sign in? Who wants to sign in? Some of us remain anonymous, which is all good. Tonight, mixed usage wording. We've called order to come up here. And we're going to discuss the mixed usage wording and the amendments that are made. Has everybody had a chance to read these? Is that a question there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't know if you were done talking. I just have a question as to who wrote the new wording. I know that Mr. Seacrest was at the meeting with the county as well as Mr. Madada. But I'm wondering, are you voting on new wording and who wrote that wording and where it came from?
We are voting on the new wording.
We can't vote on it.
Huh?
Not taking decisions here.
No, we're going over the wording.
Who wrote the wording?
Jim Seacrest.
And what it was like not a combination with the county from what I just thought.
So he had a meeting with the county and then wrote the wording and then resigned? And we're going to use that wording?
We're going over it. We're, it's not affirmative. We're here to look at it, read it, check it out, make sure that we like it. I want to take a good take from there.
See, that was a good idea, right? So does anybody have any questions or you want to go over this?
Well, I went through it. I don't have any problem with it, so that's me. I don't know whether you and Bob have thought of or any are missing in action.
Well, I got some questions, but I think they would be for telling.
Okay. Does anybody out there have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. I'd like to.
You are?
Bill Pittman from Milford Township.
How are you doing?
I'm doing pretty good. I'd like to, because there's some new people here, I see, and I'd like to revisit the birth of this zoning change. When was the zoning change first proposed? How long ago was it?
It's out here.
I think according to this, it says the original one was dated 7/3/18.
Seven three. Is there another copy of this?
Yeah. I think we have one right over here.
Here?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Oh, those are copies, doesn't that help? I thought we had all three of them.
So a follow-up question. So this occurred prior to the presentation by legends' properties about their, you know, their proposal and their talk that they gave. That happened prior to this amendment? Or the amendment happened prior to that?
Amendment?
I'm just trying to see who came first, you know, the horse and the cart here.
I honestly don't know. I wasn't sitting up here when that.
Yeah, I know. That's part of the problem here.
I believe it was presented as a proposed type of development, but our zoning wouldn't allow for that type of development. In which case, which zoning does have to take a look at it because it's a use not divided for.
Because one of the first meetings I came to, I remember Gary Clark sitting there. And they were talking about, you know, it's all incumbent upon the sewer and all that stuff. And I remember him distinctly saying, well, they can run the sewer through the township, but we're not going to pay a cent for it. And now, all of a sudden, you know, everybody's on, wants to have this multi, you know, multi.
Mixed usage.
Yeah. I don't, I don't get it.
Now, just so you're aware, sewer for here has been in discussion for over ten years.
Oh, I know. And we had the chance to get it 20 years ago and it just takes its spot. For what reason, I don't know.
No, 10 years ago, Delaware basically issued an AP wouldn't allow. We tried to get, we tried to bring it in 10 years ago. So I don't know where you stand today.
Hypothetically, it's been going on since like the late 70s. There's been business owners in town.
Now, we've even talked about what a sewage facility system or the 88 acres that the county owns to take care of the business district.
Right. That seems to be the push to me. I mean, the push is to get sewer to Milford. I don't know why we're going crazy in Milford Township trying to add more housing to it.
Well, we don't have, I've been going to the sewage meetings and we don't have all the answers yet as to how it's going to lay out. It could be a tickle interstate where it just runs through Milford.
And I mean, Seacrest did this 40-page report on the population density and whatever, you know, saying it's gone down. Well, all you gotta do is come out here on this three lane at 5 o'clock when I pick up my wife and then go to Dollar General and then try to go southbound or westbound on 611. You can't get out. You gotta pull out on the three lane and then try to merge in with the traffic that's coming down.
As far as.
Doesn't make any sense.
As far as the density in the county, you know, I did that study myself, I think by the second meeting. And it is down, the school's down, but we built the new schools, the taxes went up. A lot of people that, we had 34 closers a month, I think over three years in the county. So there's a lot of density in the county because we don't have.
But if you.
But a lot of people also moved back to where their jobs, they get closer to their jobs. Because once they moved here, they found out they're working two hours away.
But they're also talking about raising the population of the county, of the township. What, 1,500 or something like that?
Sixty.
Well, if you look at the percentage of, what percentage is Milford Township versus Pike County?
This is what I was getting at. Well, that study was a study of the whole county. Here, we're talking about just a change of.
All right. So how relevant are the data from the county for us here in the township? I guess that's, that's what I'm hearing is the question. Well, the counties around the large compared to a little township. Could you let us know who you are or?
Sure. My name is Ed Greckert. I'm in the township.
Okay, thank you.
No, I have to agree with that. The, we don't really have a projected data. We have the build-out, which showed originally 11 properties.
But how can you make a policy if you don't have the data?
Well, we're basing it off the build-out.
But we as taxpayers.
Even with the build-out though, if it went to the full 11, 11 properties, you're still looking at 1,100 apartments possibly or dwellings. The projection is for the sort of, just make it to Milford and go up six, I believe, just maybe 5 acres.
Yeah, I've heard it's going to go a couple miles more.
And well, but I got to see the actual plan. And the plan showed it going to 5 acres and that was it so far. But there's nothing to say it's not going to go further. Anything's a possibility.
In fact, the developers want to deal with beyond 84 right now.
That's correct.
And that impacts me.
Okay.
And there's no data on the sewer yet, you know? You hear, you know, you hear it's going to cost $70 a month for sewer.
Depending on, depending on the type of money. Depending on the type of monies they pay. If they go for the grants where the state came in to represent the grant money, it can't be any more than 2% of the average household income for this amount. And I don't know where we're at. That way, I believe the average household income right now is about $45,000 to $46,000 a year. So it's going to be, it's going to be based off of that more than.
Okay, so that's $9,000. Hopefully, they're going to have, I mean, you know, if you've got, if you've got to get rid of the septic system in your house, that's anywhere between $5,000 and $8,000. You've got to have a hookup to be, you've got to have, you've got a monthly.
Well, we're working, I'm working on, I'm working on pricing. I do have calls out on that to see how much it's going to cost for each household to actually hook up to it.
And you're going to release that information?
Yeah, when I have the final.
And then I'm here and you're going to need grinders and you've got to maintain them. I mean, it sounds like a nightmare to me.
As far as needing grinders, it all depends. There's a lot of variables. And what it includes is if you have a finished basement, you may not be able to get pitched to the moon from the back to the front of the house. So you might have to put a grinder pump in. But if you have an unfinished basement, you can leave it unfinished. Get enough pitch. Depending on the depth of the sewer pipe, you might be able to get gravity. But then it depends on whether they have pump systems out in the field, in the main truck lines, which is going to, of course, require valves so it doesn't pump back into your house. There's, there's a lot of things I'm waiting on answering.
Well, have you heard about what happened in Pocono Township down there? They ran a sewer line along 611 down there. They had to go through Slate and they didn't bother to. So they ran the line and then went up and ran the line. So now they got a problem because it.
No flow.
There's no gravity flow there. And now they're arguing about who's going to fix the problem.
How did they get that in there? They just go in?
I don't know. Some inspector wasn't watching.
Chris?
Tisha Lepi, Delaware Township. So just some of the things that you're talking about and we've discussed before. And now that, you know, Larry's here, Bob's here, Pat's here. But it all goes back to planning, comprehensive planning. And I just don't, I know that there was momentum and people were interested, both Peggy as a supervisor, to get a gentleman that came out from Harrisburg just as an introduction of who he could hook you guys up with. His initial thing was for planning. It was a workshop and the only person that showed up that night was Bob. And I know there was a lot of back and forth as to why, but I think all of these questions go back to, you know, expertise in an area. And you guys are qualified to make the call, but I think you need a little bit of guidance to get back to the comprehensive planning on this. And, and I think a lot of these questions would then be handled. And I think that this municipality, most people that are not here right now are at the borough meeting. That's where I came from, that's where I'm going back to. Because we're trying to encourage them to engage. The Milford Borough and Matt Morris had a multi-municipality agreement on their garbage trucks. So they are accessing grant money for that reason. And they won't have it, was a point made tonight, if they don't do it together. Same thing on a comprehensive plan. It's a multi-municipality. It just makes sense, besides that it makes sense, it's also how you access the funding for it, to get the consultants that have the expertise in the area. And then you're making a call based on more information than, you know, than. Because I think it's a big project to take on. I think Mr. Seacrest was taking on an awful lot of, you know, and there were, and there are people that can help. You know, you're, you're there to make the call as a board, but I don't think that you necessarily have. And it doesn't mean that the flavor of it has to be the same. It's not. In fact, there will be the flavor of Milford Township and there will be the flavor retained in the borough, as is Matt Morris. It's not because you're working together that that then dissipates, you know, that the township has its own personality and its own strengths and weaknesses, as does the borough's strength and weaknesses. So I think that's it, that was sort of a wall that I felt Mr. Seacrest was like, we don't want to do that. But I don't understand why. Why wouldn't you, you know, work together?
Well, as I'm speaking for myself, I know that all the information is down there. We still have a lot of work to go ahead and do. As far as the comprehensive plan goes, we are not limiting ourselves to just the information that we know. And we are going to go ahead and reach out to other experts. Everything just has to flow in order for us to be able to go ahead and do that. So, I mean, as far as a dot that's done, we don't have that at this point. So we are, you know, open to how it's going to unfold.
Well, I guess the point that I'm trying to make is that before you make a change in the zoning of this magnitude, it's, it's important to have, because that's a big part of how that works. All these questions that are coming up go right back to that. So why, why do it another way? I don't, I still don't understand any benefit in that at all.
And if it did, would you?
Into rushing through a zoning change before you have done opportunity to have a proper comprehensive plan.
Answer Chris first. And then you're next.
Yeah, Peggy Manuel.
No, I'd like to answer Chris.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then you're next, but I promise. If not, I'll throw in my hat and leave right now. A lot of the municipalities here do not even have currently a current municipal plan. You are aware of that as well.
Absolutely.
I know I've been reaching out to a few of them and inquiring and I, well, it's outdated. We've got to work on it. It's outdated. We've got to work that. We will be getting those. I, and personally, if I have to file FOIA, hopefully it'll be nice. Since I have to sit behind this table and work on one, they will be somewhat cooperative and save me a quarter or a page. But ours was outdated, you know that too. And I believe the boroughs is outdated. We all individually have to work on it. You might not like my take on it, but my take is I believe each individual municipality should have their own first.
How can you find?
Excuse me. I just want to get this out before I COVID brain crank it. Each municipality should have their own first. And then join together and then take the goods and whatever and, you know, because you can have, say, Milford Township and Milford Borough, or Milford Township and West Hall Township, or Milford Borough and Dinkman Township, or you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Each one should have their own first before we do a joint one. And as far as getting the professionals that are available, we would have to ask the supervisors to approve it. Because we just can't, you know, our meeting later in the month. Say, okay, we want so-and-so, so-and-so, or so-and-so. And, you know, without their elected, we're just appointed. We cannot make that call. We can say, we'd like XYZ Company as a first choice, ABC for the second, Shepstone Associates for the third or whatever. Whichever one, and suit our needs the best. And I believe we've all sat in meetings where the supervisors were pretty at marching agreement that they would approve that. If that helps.
Yeah, it does. As long as the.
Well, I'm afraid to reach out.
Before the zoning is put in place that's irreparable. That's my point.
Okay.
That's what I'm, that's the point, like.
Is that it?
Do the planning and then, and then you'll be in a place to make a better decision about the zoning.
Okay. Peggy, you're next.
Milford Township. I have a comment and it's about the planning board and Larry and Pat and Bob, you may not like it, but I do want to bring it up, that I am, I'm concerned about the planning board because when we, a roomful of people, attended the first workshop with Jim Seacrest as chairperson, we thought it was going to be a real workshop where you're thinking about a high-density project. And now we come to a workshop where we thought we would be looking at the middle ground. We realize that Milford Township's zoning as it stands is restrictive and that the township wants to loosen it up somewhat, and that's fine. But to go all the way to the other end of the needle, now you're on full, now you're on empty. Or you're on empty and now you're really on full. There was no talk at all of the middle ground. I don't know if it's too late for that. I would hope that the supervisors could listen to us and would listen to us. And let's just talk about it. We don't have to decide anything right now that keeps coming up, coming up, coming up. Let's just put the brakes on and let's really look at what's good for Milford Township. I mean, we all live here. We all want the quality of life. We don't want more traffic. We don't want more people. And it's not a question of, I'm the last one here, so let's close the door. It's not that. It has to be responsible. And if you read the comprehensive plan, you will see that preserving open space, quality of life, it's consistent throughout that plan. So I'm a little disappointed in the planning board for that reason. And also because when I asked Mr. Seacrest why he was using the 100 on 20 acres throughout that document, he said it's because the supervisors want us to use that number. Now, does that sound like you're an independent board and, and the supervisors are their own committee? It does not. The supervisors want us to use that, that, that's. So I'm sitting back here and I'm like looking at you three guys and I know there's two missing or one missing. And I just want to have faith in you. I want to have faith in you. I really do. I know you can't bring it back. You've already, the supervisors already told you what to do. So they have now this plan for the proposal here of the 100 apartments. And I don't know, just had to get it off my chest.
Thank you. Can I go first on this one? I'd like to respond to that.
Okay.
First and foremost, I do not serve at the pleasure of the supervisors. Nobody tells me what to do.
I'm sorry.
No, it's cool.
But I sat right there and I asked Mr. Seacrest, why are you using the 100? And you were at that meeting and he said because the supervisors told us to. And nobody else said anything else.
Well, it's a max number, obviously, in my opinion, that we're, we're looking for a maximum set for it. How the 100 came up, I'm not totally sure. And I'll admit that I don't have all the answers. I mean.
Doesn't it make sense though, if you're going to change a zone and you look at all possible options?
We will.
Don't you look at the middle ground?
Before it's also.
Nobody has talked about the middle ground, except Mr. Gary Clark was here one time. The meeting was packed again and middle ground was mentioned and he did some calculating and he said, what did he say? Something about 11, middle ground would be 11,000, whatever his, something like that. But that was the only, that was the only comment about middle ground in this whole process.
I'm not going to speak for Mr. Clark either, or Mr. Seacrest. And we all know Mr. Seacrest is no longer here as part of this. As a matter of fact, I would encourage you to put in an application to the supervisors to come have a seat up here with Mr. Peggy. Because the more diversity we have up here behind this table, the better we can go forwards to take care of our township for everybody concerned. That's just.
I'm not sure I'm qualified, otherwise I would.
Do you believe in common sense, moderate growth?
Absolutely. And that's what, that's the point, common sense.
And moderate growth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That'd be pretty much.
At least take a look at it and tweak it.
That's pretty much my take on going forwards.
All right, well.
All right, next. Oh, you're the chairman. I don't want to overstep.
Sorry, this is the engineer and me talking. It was a comment made earlier that based on 2% of the 45,000, that the number would be 9,000. It's not 9,000, it's 900. That's a little bit different than I thought. Thank you for being.
Thanks, Greg.
For some of you.
It's all good. While we're on this subject.
New man.
No, I'm on the statement.
I've got a couple of statements to make. I've been told that, I voted no. Everybody knows I voted no because of my wife. Now, anybody here that knows me knows I speak my mind. I don't care what my wife thinks. She has a right to her opinion. But my vote for no has nothing to do, and I've said this a bunch of times, has nothing to do with legends. It was just the ordinance itself. I was not happy with the way it was turned out. Okay, that's first. Second, I'm very uncomfortable and I'm not in agreement with one person representing all of us at that meeting with the county. Because I'm reviewing some of the statements that were made and some stuff just still doesn't seem to match. But I'd like to know why.
State always had that meeting?
Well, yeah. The stuff on the, or the county's.
Response?
Response we got with the 14th. Some of the stuff they asked to be changed in there wasn't changed. So why? I mean, I guess it's a question for Tony. Okay?
How did you get a copy of that, were you?
Because I went online and got it.
Oh, okay.
You can get it here. Now have one.
Thank you.
Okay, and as far as the 100 apartments, that's what we were asked to look at, at ordinance with 100 apartments. Now.
Looking at it and putting it in, go ahead. Sorry.
It's up to the board to make recommendations. The board chose to recommend 100 apartments. Except for one. So.
Exactly. So the workshop would have been looking at other options.
Why?
That's what we all thought. And it was a, you know, it was a fact.
True. I can't.
I know, I know.
Wait, this gentleman's, this is not. Okay.
No, you corrected my mistake. Thank you.
That was it?
That was all?
Okay. Okay, yes, sir.
Just when, the train just left the station. Forgot what I was going to do. It'll come back.
It's on loop. It'll, it'll come back.
Anybody else?
Oh, I guess, I, it just came in. Just, the train just came in.
It was in a loop.
This amendment change, and I think I said this a couple of months ago, this amendment change is based on the fact that sewer is going to be coming through here. Is that, is the sewer coming through here?
We don't know.
Do we know that as a fact?
We don't know.
But that's conditional.
Right. So, I mean, why?
I think we're still waiting for the 537 study to get done.
Yeah.
Aren't we?
Uh, we.
We're suing with enforcement, I think you will know.
Until our report was sent into the AP, we haven't gotten a response on it yet. So that's like the first step.
So we're still waiting.
It's, even if it happens, it's going to be a ways off. I don't see it happening very quickly. They're going to have to do an anti-degradation for the area, which is a very hard thing to do. It's not an easy, that's not an easy problem to bring up and say that we're in, we're in anti-degradation. I did send reports in over the last five years of the repairs that have been done to the systems. And Milford Township had 18, had 1,300 or something problems over five years. Now, there were some systems that were upgraded, but we haven't, we haven't the ground to upgrade.
I mean, I mean, isn't the real purpose of running the sewer to fix the borough's problem? I mean, let's come right down.
You'd have to really ask the borough because I don't know where they stand on it at this point?
I mean, isn't that, you know.
I've heard, I've heard different, different answers from different people in the borough. So I really don't know what the overall answer is in the borough. But it was to take care of the, the main plan for last, at least 15 to 20 years has been to take care of the business district.
My understanding is that business owners in the borough as opposed to residents were looking forward to relief from their current onsite systems.
Some of them, yes. And some of them, some of them, there's probably about, I don't know, five or six businesses that actually have a problem.
With the onsite?
Yes. And a lot of it is due to the ground being very porous. Some of the systems are collecting a lot of stormwater runoff because we have, we have sand. And water runs through sand.
That, in my understanding though, that if there were people in the borough in favor of it, it would tend to be more the businesses as opposed to the residents. That had been my collective impression.
Well, that was, that was the whole point. The point was originally originated for, for the business district. But now some residential people are getting on board because they feel they're having problems or they feel that their systems are inadequate. But again, we don't have the, we don't have the failure rate in the residential area. But again, we don't have the failure rate in the residential area. So... And since this started, a lot of new technology has come out of the sewer system, which allows more peat systems, coconut systems, stuff like that, where the water that comes out of them is actually drinkable. VODs are at home.
So there may be an alternative to the sewer system by utilizing other ways of managing...
There's alternatives to the system, but there's no alternative to hydraulics. You can take hydraulics. I mean, they have a peat system, which actually does take out all the fines and everything in the sewage. So you do have less going out to the field. So they take a reduction there. Then you have your aerobic systems, which the hydraulic load is the same. It doesn't reduce it because it's just trying to eat up the bacteria faster in solids. So you're still getting the fines and stuff. So they only allow a 30% reduction. But the hydraulic load in the field is still pretty much the same. So if you're taking on groundwater from any type of runoff into your system, you're gonna have problems. And that's what we do have a lot of.
Township?
Town... Oh, I mean, for you that... For those of you who don't know, I've been a sewage officer since 2005.
Who do you have sewers?
Four municipalities at one time. And I'm down to Milford Township and Milford Borough. And over the years, we've seen a lot of stuff.
And that's put nicely.
Yeah. Yeah, sometime... I mean, I do speak my mind, but in public, I will be a little bit.
Anything else on a particular subject?
So you're not gonna make any decisions on it tonight because Bob would like to talk about it?
No, we can't. No, we made... We agreed we'd make no decisions at work.
Yeah. This is just get your feedback. If you read through this and you were looking at it and you say, "Well, I don't want these two words in here." Yeah, that's cool. That's up to you. Because that's what we're all about. And I mean, we want to go ahead and make it so that we're working for you and putting things together and going forward, you know?
We shouldn't move forward on the UGI application. Okay.
Can I just ask one final question?
Yes.
Does the consensus seem to be that we're better off amending our comprehensive plan prior to making any decisions relating to this specific request for changing the ordinance? We got the consensus that the comprehensive plan should be totally revised and amended prior to coming up with any specific recommendation regarding this particular issue?
Well, we're gonna be looking at the comprehensive plan as an overall.
Because amending that is...
Larry was saying outdated.
Amending that is a ruminant because it's...
Comprehensive plans don't become outdated. What they do is every 10 years, there has to be a review. If you agree with the one you have, you can keep the one you have if you see where it needs to be updated.
Right. Overdue for amendment to the comprehensive plan based on the fact that it's supposed to be reviewed and at least renewed or changed every 10 years. And where are we at?
13.
13 years? So it is overdue?
It's overdue for a review.
Yeah. So that's what we're...
It's not overdue for a rewrite. We decide as a council what we want to rewrite.
Well, the review will determine whether it needs to be rewritten or just adopted intact or whatever.
Well, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna review it and then, for lack of a better word, tweak it.
Take a look. Everybody's gonna take a look at sections and make the decision on what they think might be needed.
What you ought to be doing with it.
And then it'll be brought forward in front of the public. Because the public input has to be in it for a comprehensive plan.
Does the... Do we tend to believe that amending, that reviewing the comprehensive plan should be a prior to making any change in the ordinance? Is that the consensus?
Yes and no. Because just because it's a use not provided for, you have to provide for a use.
Same thing? I'm not understanding.
What they proposed was a use not provided for in this township.
Right.
So we do have to provide for it. And the way we provide for it...
Or deny it.
No, you can't deny a use. You gotta have something in there that either says you can have it or a good reason why you can't. Or you'll end up in court.
Isn't the fundamental request to be instituted a mixed use on a single piece of property? Isn't that a fundamental change?
Yeah.
Right, to allow for a mixed use?
But the gravity of it is what's being decided in the ordinance.
Right. And it's kind of like the fundamental change that would need to be made is that that piece of property, that particular piece of property, could have a mixed use versus strictly commercial.
Well, you couldn't make it just for one property. That would be spot on.
Were applied to...
It would apply to a...
Of that nature.
Of that nature, right.
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yep.
Quickly. Erica Burnett, Westfall Township. Phyllis, I think you bring up a good point. I think the consensus among many people out here is that no public input was taken in consideration. And this was just rushed right through by a new board who really never asked any public input in what we thought. And so...
Can I correct that understanding to some extent? Because I've been at every meeting since the beginning of time.
Yep.
To say that this was rushed through is a misnomer because truthfully, many of the meetings that were held did review what the change would involve, right?
Was there public input?
So I mean, this didn't happen overnight. Or you didn't wake up one morning and say, "Where did this come from?" How many meetings have this issue been the subject of discussion over a year, I'm guessing, legally? Am I right?
And how much public input was there?
Anybody who wanted to come was entitled to come and review what was being considered. I mean, I went to every meeting. I have my own opinions about whether I think it's a good idea or a poor idea, right? And I had opportunity when these... When the discussion was open to... I was probably the only one here from the township, aside from Representative Belvedere. Dave, you've been at various meetings because you've offered your perspective on what was being planned. But I think I was just about the only person here from the township. And it's not because nobody else was welcome. It's because nobody else came. And to suggest that this all of a sudden appeared out of the blue and took us all by surprise is a misnomer. That's a fact, that it's been the subject of meetings for well over a year. And you've had the opportunity, as everyone has, to come and say, "Hey, wait a minute." Right? So this is not like all of a sudden...
But I feel like since it was brought to our attention and we have been coming to the meetings, that it has not been a discussion. We have been allowed to make our comments, but it seems like we are not being heard. We delivered how many signatures? Over 100 signatures of people in the township who were opposed to this.
Who got that?
Who got that?
You did.
You did.
I didn't get it.
The planning... The supervisors.
Okay, so you guys gave that to supervisors?
We had brought it up here. And then it was also given...
It was... It was...
I believe you. I'm just saying I...
No, well, Phyllis is saying, "No, it wasn't." But it was.
I'll take your word for it.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
I said, "I'll take you on your word for it."
Oh, yeah.
It didn't come down to us.
No, no. It was given to the supervisors. My mistake.
I will personally ask you to get a copy of that.
At your convenience sometime tomorrow.
We'll take one more and then we have to move on to the UGI application.
As kind of a newbie here, although I've been here for 35 years, I didn't really get an answer to Phyllis's question about the priority and the consensus issue about doing the review prior to making any kind of agreement on a specific request. And I'm asking, okay? And I guess my question is, what is the process for the review? Is it underway?
Of the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
I think one of the things that...
What is the process for that?
Prior to what was being...
Jim Seacrest.
One of the things he had brought up at the earlier meeting was taking the comprehensive plan and breaking it into sections and gathering input from various individuals who would look at each...
Which that was never brought up again.
Well, it seemed like it should be brought up again. That's what I'm hearing.
That's the step it stuck at, right?
Yes.
That's unsticking.
But it's stuck there. It means it's not going anywhere. So we're working on it.
Why is that?
Because we want to go to the next step.
I think that you'd be a priority, actually, in my personal opinion.
I think you're hearing that there is not a consensus. We have heard from everybody. But the voices are that that is a priority and it should be unstuck.
Well, correct.
I think maybe Shahana should put it on the next workshop agenda.
As long as it's an open workshop.
Yeah.
As opposed to what I've heard.
Which would be nice, right? Put that on.
At any time. Yep. I don't know who's got what sections of the...
But it was a...
Jim was starting to break that out into sections, right?
Yeah. I had fireworks.
To participate in any area where they felt they had any...
Yes, I believe I've got that... The copy of the people who... Whatever sections, certain amount of people got. Bob got some. I got some. Larry got some. And Kathy got some. I believe I have a copy of that. I'll go ahead and call Shahana. You probably have a record of it from the meeting that we did that on. And then we will make sure to revisit that.
At the next workshop.
Yeah. And then we'll bring it out. And then one of the things that was planned on doing that was each individual that received something, such as the fireworks ordinance, would get one of the individuals from the group and say, "Okay, give me your input." So it was a personal type of one-on-one type of thing. So that one person would be a representative to several others in the group. So that way, we get a consensus of everything going on from that one particular individual. And that way, we're... Yeah, we're able to hear more of what's being said by the group rather than just one or two. And what will happen is we'll get that information or we'll present our... Just for instance, for the fireworks. I talked to three people. "Okay, next month, we're gonna go ahead and have this meeting again." "That's up to you for that month to go ahead and go out and find as much as you want to with regard to that, bring it back. And then I see it and then we digest it from that point on." So that way, there's a good sense of what's happening. And I think that's fair.
Thank you.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Okay. Tony Gerhardt, Deyment Township. The current municipal plan. If you wanted to look at that, it's online?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's online.
The comprehensive plan?
It's a comprehensive.
Yeah, okay.
It's like this.
Is it that thing?
Oh. It's huge.
67 pages.
No, I think it's 200 pages.
I didn't think it was at that point. It wasn't.
It covers everything under the sun. You know, that's why it has to be, in my opinion, intact in pieces because it involves so many different aspects that, you know, the best way is to break it into pieces.
Well, that's why... That was the...
Right, the game plan.
Yeah.
The part of that plan is the sewage?
No.
Sewage was mentioned.
Yes, sewage is in the comprehensive plan.
So was Gifford Pissow.
In the old comprehensive plan.
So was John Pittis. It was like a novel.
In the old comprehensive plan, the sewage was gonna come through Milford and go into Milford Borough.
And it also states that, you know, beware of a sewer and all of the problems that it could bring.
That's why we're gonna have to... We have to investigate it.
One being which?
You just brought up a very good point, Erica. Thank you. There's a lot of conflicts in that. Very, very documented. A lot. And I believe it's 187 pages.
That just points to the importance that we're just talking about.
That's correct. And that's what we're trying to do.
Sharing the feedback you've already given of the various parts with us. Sharing the feedback you've already given of the various parts with us.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
But I think it's a good idea that people who are interested in that do print the whole thing out. I mean, I printed the whole thing out, I have not read the whole thing. You know, I poked this, I poked that, and look at things I'm...
It's not exactly riveting.
Because of the size, but it's something that we're gonna have to take one step at a time in the meetings and go over whatever we cover in three hours.
Do we have a goal of having that accomplished like within a year or within six months?
You always have a goal, but doesn't mean you're gonna meet it.
Three years overdue, three or four overdue.
Three and what? This is the first time, like, the prior, the prior permission.
Phyllis, we're just gonna go bang and stuff. That's not gonna happen.
The prior group, the prior what? What's your group? You're the planning board. Had never even had the comprehensive plan on the agenda.
I can't speak for them.
So originally, when this first was brought up, that we wanted to go ahead and review the comprehensive plan, they said a minimum of a year to go ahead and get through with it.
Yes.
Okay, there was a minimum.
Minimum.
Minimum of a year. So it's all from there. And it depends on each and every meeting that we have regarding to the comprehensive plan. If we take one topic and it's a hot topic and we spend three hours on one topic, well, then guess what?
This is the county.
That's all. But what our plan is to get through...
When we reworked the zoning in Shahala, it was over two years. And that wasn't two hundred pages.
Then it's not gonna go the first time through either, so...
So if we're good on that, I'd like to move to the UGI application.
That was at the last meeting, right? Wasn't it?
They presented it, yes.
Yes, did anybody get... Now, before we go any further, they sent in the plan that we reviewed at the last meeting, which we would made a lot of corrections due. So the plan that went into county wasn't with the corrections.
They knew it was going to come back, obviously. Even Anthony stated that, "Are you sure you wanna do that?" We motioned it to accommodate them.
I said it too. "You might wanna wait till we..." We all do, yeah.
Pretty much. But they chose to do it anyway and it went to the county and I see one, two, three, four, five...
But even with the comments, I don't think we can review anything without the current updated plan.
And they need to update the plan before we can...
Wait, the sections on the...
From the planning board from the last meeting.
So that's pretty simple.
Did you send a copy of the comments to UGI?
I did not.
Okay. Maybe as a board, we should... Ask her, yeah, no, we can't make a motion, does that make that decision? We should just ask her to send a copy of the plans to UGI or...
Well, it has to go to UGI and...
Not consulting.
Yes, so what do you think? Shahana, can you send over something to those guys? Since we can't make a motion or a decision.
Like, so I send these comments to UGI?
UGI and not consulting. Yeah, that one.
Because they don't want to do it, they're consulting, GIP or whatever.
And just kind of maybe let them know that it was brought up at this meeting, but we weren't able to do anything simply because we didn't have all the information subject to review on the updated site plan.
We can always ask the supervisors off at the meeting next Monday and ask them if they have a need motion.
Plus you have a waiting...
Super competent.
Okay, yeah.
Is the county board the ultimate decision maker?
No, no. The county, by state law, we have to send everything we do to the county. The county will send back its comments, but everything, it's really just an advisory board for us. Where you can look at and say, "Hey, we didn't realize that, this is good." But they'll, if they recommend stuff to us that we don't wanna do and we don't have to. Okay? But it's still that section that I was...
Do you have a question yet? Do you have a question about UGI's?
I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I didn't know what they were proposing. It's the utilities, right?
Correct. They wanna expand out here.
I just, I just thought you could give me a quick, what are they...
They're getting rid of the two trailers and putting up a building with an actual garage.
Oh, 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 nice.
It's an improvement to an existing...
I like to hear about improvements, yeah, that would look better, good.
Yeah, much better, I like, yeah. All right, so we're good on that? All right, love the way it's working. Okay, special events, fireworks ordinance, discussion.
All right, we'll start with the fireworks ordinance.
That's what we love.
Yes.
Fireworks. Page one, paragraph one.
Well, most of it's okay. Where do you gotta go, Bob?
Did everybody have to get a copy of the fireworks thing? You weren't welcome to it?
Anybody need one while I'm up?
Anybody else? Working on transparency, how's that going?
Now, seeing this for the first time, do I have the chance to read it?
Yeah, we can't make decisions.
We can't make decisions. We're just talking it out.
All right, the biggest issue that I have with it is the liability on the township.
Which page?
It's the enforcement section.
Oh.
So that is...
Network farm is on seven.
Is it by violation?
This number's on the bottom, I'm reading corn.
Page ten is violation. Yeah, I got it. It was the safety and enforcement. Maybe they took it out. No, they just...
I don't mind if they did a special, I think she saw that one.
No, it was in the fireworks one, because it said that the zoning officer had to approve the site before the fireworks went off.
Page nine, inspection.
Page nine.
You do all your best work in the crowd.
Yeah, that's it, all right. Thank you, Phyllis. Section eight on page nine. "The code official and fire chief are to be contacted at least twenty-four hours in advance of a display of fireworks event to inspect the display site." The display site is subject to inspection and approval prior to discharging fireworks. All applicable provisions and clearances provided by NFPA 1123.06 should be out.
It's now.
Okay, now, the code official and the fire chief will be present during the fireworks display event and will be in direct contact with the contractor operator before and after the event. As we see, monitoring of the display site is a responsibility of property owner, barriers, controls, perimeter, and will be conducted by, verified by the code official. What kind of liability is the township taking on with these kinds of inspections that we're saying it's safe?
Who is the code official?
That would be Sean Stru... I mean, Sean Bowles.
That's a county person.
Yeah.
Well, the one thing that I'm seeing...
Being the fact is that he doesn't have his fireworks license.
What does he do if there's more than one?
That was the other thing.
I mean, we're all a little skitso, but we...
The answer that I got to that was they'll have to schedule him so he can be there.
Yeah.
Well, that's not gonna work.
It doesn't.
And years ago, the township tried to enact a burn ban ordinance. And it came down to the final say that if we say it's safe and something happens, are we liable? Yes. I see the same thing here. If we say it's safe and something happens...
What do you think about, maybe we oughta just look at the state law first and maybe incorporate something...
I think before we...
Into regular zoning rather than have a whole separate ordinance.
Before we go any further with this, I think we should get a copy of the state ordinance and take it one thing at a time compared to what we have here.
Is that the NFPA 1123.06?
Yep.
That would imagine.
I mean, I think that would be the reasonable way to approach it. Because once you start telling people things are safe, things aren't safe. You're taking a lot of liability.
The other problem is, is that you tell somebody it's safe, then they turn into idiots.
Huh, it said it was safe, I can do anything I want. You know, I mean, like... I mean, a quick scenario, we went down to the river one time to go fishing and the gate was across the river. We said, "We can't go fishing with a boat." He said, "No, we're saying the waters are not safe today." I said, "All right." So you're saying when the gate's open, it's safe. So if something happens, we can sue the government. That gate was never closed again.
So by virtue of the code official being responsible, that makes the township liable for his decision as to whether it's safe or not.
That's the way I say, I mean, it's a question for Tony, but...
That's a little overkill here.
Yeah.
Well, my question is, let's say, so I force, I got three shells I wanna shoot off. I gotta get a permit pack?
Okay, you wanna, you wanna hear mine on that one?
Yeah.
And I'll, I'm gonna work right in there. No, no, wait a minute, before you go, there is an amount charged here.
Oh, is there, okay.
It basically covers like five and six inch mortars and a...
Yeah. So if you're getting, if you're getting those mortars, you don't even want them.
You're gonna be safe as steel too.
That's in section one scope.
And you have to find the sentence. And they still miss fire, you all that. So we got some issues with this and we should get the...
Okay, so...
Try to get a state ordinance.
Get the state ordinance and try it.
And peruse it amongst the rest of everything else we've been...
Can you grab the state ordinance for us?
I mean, basically, because of the way this is written, like I said, it's five inch mortars and above that it seems to be affecting.
Okay.
We gotta see where that falls in with the sting. And then maybe a permit for just that. So we know where it's at.
Yeah.
We can't control it.
Yeah, well, inch and a half, firecrackers, stuff like that.
That's, that's stuff you're never gonna, you're never gonna be able to control that. Hey, guys, the show up, they started...
I think it was sixty grams. I think somewhere near it's got sixty grams.
This is, this is from like more along the lines of people who are gonna have a display.
Yeah, there it is. Section E.
What page?
Page five. Just one and two. Two is aerial shells containing more than sixty grams of pyrotechnic compositions. So anything under sixty is in part of this ordinance. And at sixty grams, you're looking at five to six inch mortars.
You're on page five?
Page five.
James Fox.
That's an expensive shot.
That's done, you wish, you know, do you have a permit?
Okay, all right, good.
On most of the fireworks display items conducted by businesses rather than individuals in their backyard?
That's both. Usually what'll happen is somebody wanna put on a fireworks display and they'll hire a group like Legion Fireworks to come in and set them off. But by hiring them, they're taking full responsibility for having fireworks on their property.
The official who's setting them off. The company that is responsible for the...
Once you get into the bigger fireworks, you need a pyrotechnic license. So generally hire somebody that has one or somebody has one, they can do it.
So are we gonna wait until we read this through and get more information?
We wanna get the state law first and then see if we even really need a whole separate ordinance or if we can incorporate with the existing ones.
Take part in something else.
Well, it's, I believe fireworks are covered in the existing too and this could be just amended.
Yeah, because this is, these things came from the compensation plan, right? This is where this came from. This is one of the sections out of the comprehensive plan that we were supposed to review.
Happening here now.
Correct, correct. All right, so then we're gonna go ahead and get a copy of the state law regulations and then we're gonna go, we'll be able to match that up. We'll add another workshop, we'll work it out.
Bring that into the next workshop so everybody has a name.
Okay, good. All right, so next, is everybody done on fireworks?
I got a question. And I don't, I don't know this. I mean, all the, like, the fireworks place down on the corner, Crare's Corner?
Yes.
I mean, I thought I saw them say three inch shells and that. Are they, are they, are you able to buy those?
Yes.
So you're saying...
Not, not living where you live. People from Jersey can pull over and... There's a loophole in the state law. You can buy them, but you can't transport them. So it's like, I don't know. They can come over here and buy five, six inch mortars if they sell them there. But then they better get them back to Jersey without getting caught because you can't transport them over state lines.
All right, so we good?
Those stores are mostly internet sales, are you?
Yes. Moving along to special events ordinance?
All right. Voice of doom again.
Bring it on, baby.
Special events, why do we need it? Because we have temporary use permits.
Correct.
I don't foresee any big rock concerts happening or wild biker parties.
That would still be covered under a temporary use permit.
Yeah, it really did.
We have parades.
Yeah, but all the years I was owning also here, that's, everything went under temporary use. I mean, this would affect, if I'm not mistaken, the way I'm reading it, this would affect like the car wash out front and stuff where those people come in and just go to the supervisors and say them like permission.
You just beat me to it, it's common sense, it's...
But they have to issue a, they have to issue a liability of...
Yeah, they have to have insurance.
Insurance.
You weren't the last supervisor.
Insurance makes sense.
When the supervisors, actually it was Mr. Clark, said about the barn burning up there and that there was going to be events being held to help them raise funds. And he said in the meeting, I believe, don't...
Expedited.
Expedited, and they were just gonna green light it right through. Just like with the hero banners going up. The service member active retired, no longer with his whatever. The six ladies or five or however many were here, they come in, they didn't even finish man, it was man, thank you man, next. As long as you get DC, you can ask approval to use their phones or phones. And it was that quick. They didn't even have to do the, there was nothing involved. It was, okay, both done. Common sense. Like Bob just said, most people when they come in, special events, they wanna use the building for fundraising and use the water.
Car washes.
We the taxpayers, eat the money. I don't have a problem for somebody with fifty, couple hundred gallons of water to wash cars for a good cause. I can. Everybody out here doesn't if it's going to a good bona fide 501 or even a good cost. As long as they have the proof of insurance because the township residents, if something goes south, you know, they get into litigation.
We have always required proof of insurance. And as a matter of fact, with proof of insurance, what the township is a rider on.
All right, so then this, this ordinance, special events...
It's kinda overdone, isn't it?
Understandable, but...
Rip it up. Rip it up and use it conditionally.
Thank you.
Temporary use.
That's good. Um, because the temporary use can go ahead and we can make amendments to the temporary use, correct?
Correct.
There may be a couple...
One second, one second.
You might, you might wanna review the temporary use and just see if there's anything we wanna add to it, but it's covered everything we've ever done in it.
Okay, well then, well then, let's, let's take a look at that. Let's, uh...
I mean, did this come down from the supervisors?
Why?
The special event, look, show up at the meeting.
This was, this was part of that, the first portion of the...
Comprehensive plan?
Thank you. This is like chapter, chapter one, A and Z. Okay, so this is all part of that. And that's how this came out here, came to light. So what we're doing in essence is going through the comprehensive plan piece by piece and requesting public input. At this point, what we've decided collectively is that we should take a look at the temporary usage form and that code system to find out how that matches up to this special events and see what we need and what we don't. Does everybody agree with that?
Because that already exists?
That, correct, that exists. This, this could be, this might be able to be streamlined.
The temporary use has covered the car shows at the Green Union. Anything that's gone on over here, Christmas tree sales, everything fell under the temporary use the way it's written. And that's the ones that actually have a business or having a bigger event, they got permits for them. And then anything local, like the Girl Scouts don't cookies in the parking lot or something like that, they just went before the supervisors and asked permission.
As a temporary, under the temporary...
No, that wouldn't be under temporary. That was just asking permission of the township to utilize the lot.